Okay.
Let's stay very.
Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Start with a roll call. McKee here, Lanterman?
Here.
Frederick?
Here.
Verran Camp?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Please just stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On to agenda approval. We have a couple tweaks and additions here. Staff, it looks like we added 6M. Is that correct? To consent? I believe that was added.
Yes, 6M was added on Friday. Correct, Mr. Mayor.
And then I'd like to add 4A, just a brief at presentation, which is a moment of silence. I'll explain in a minute on recent events. And then, does staff have anything else to add or modify?
I just wanted to erroneously number 10. We do not have a closed session scheduled. The item 13A has been updated at the DAS, and when it comes up, I'll explain what the update changes were to the schedule. I believe that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, perfect. And then the only other thing I have is we had to request to move open forum just a little bit later. So I would suggest we move open forum, and I'm tracking this, so hopefully we don't get lost in it. Open forum to right after consent agenda instead of right before. So just split them those two. And then, taking item 6H on consent and moving that for brief discussion on to, moving it to 8A unfinished business. So the applicant can speak on it. And other than that, does anyone else have changes?
Motion to approve the changes noted.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. And if I forget one of the changes we just made, feel free to come in. On to presentations. And yeah, like I mentioned, I just thought it would be appropriate if we had a brief moment of silence for the events that happened. Was it last week now? It feels like?
Saturday.
Yeah. Where Representative Hortman, Melissa Hortman was killed along with her husband, and Senator Hoffman and his wife were shot. Unfortunately, are seemingly recovering okay, and I just would like a moment of silence for that. Thank you. And we certainly wish their families and loved ones and colleagues and friends well wishes and a speedy recovery to the Hoffmans. It's pretty horrific what happened. Then we are on to consent agenda, which consists of items 6G through, and then 6, or 6A through 6G, and 6I through 6M. Does anyone want to pull anything?
I would like to pull D and E, please.
D and E. Jeremy, anything else?
Can I, can I comment without pulling it, or do I have to pull it to comment?
How big of a comment?
Very short.
Go, go for it.
All right. With respect to the Police Department cadet program, I just want to thank the chief. I think that that is a very creative solution for the current challenges in hiring practices.
Well said.
So I just wanted to give a, give a thank you to the chief.
Well said. Okay, so we will pull D and E. So that gives us, I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, F, G, I, J, K, L, M.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
D, Jeremy?
Okay. I wanted to suggest a couple of minor tweaks to the policy. My understanding is that we can allow an exemption to the need to get multiple bids up to $50,000. And I would like to give staff that kind of discretion where we don't require them to go out for bid when we know we have an excellent value, or when time is short, but we allow them to when they feel that it would add value. So I'd just like to change that from 10K to 50K. And I wanted to confer with staff what the mechanisms would be on the affirmative steps that were outlined. There are a lot of stories about how government is really slow to contract because of all of the steps that we need to go through. How can we do this in such a way that we can work with small vendors or selected vendors when it's appropriate, but not drive a lot of additional cost and time into our projects? I know there is an exemption that's allowed for economically, for economic feasibility around those kinds of vendor selections. How would staff anticipate determining whether a particular project can be sub-lotted and split between smaller vendors and when it wouldn't?
So to speak to first why this policy is before you, it's because for the first time, we've received significant federal funding, and it was found that we didn't have a policy, and that put us in a problem when it came to the audit because we're required to have a policy. And so that's why the policy came before you. That's why it wasn't included, because we haven't had that as an issue in the past when I brought forth the financial management policies last year. That's why it wasn't included, because it wasn't within the scope of our regular responsibilities. But it was identified in this audit as a problem. In terms of the thresholds, so unfortunately, in my past life, I lived in what's called the Federal Acquisition Regulation, Part 13, which covers all of your simplified acquisition procedures, which this falls under. And so we don't have a lot of wiggle room when it comes to appropriated funds. So while there are provisions in which we can change under state statute, there's also, for example, the simplified acquisition threshold for federal is 250,000, but in Minnesota statute, it's 175,000. And so we're trying to balance our state requirements and the federal requirements within this one. So the short answer is on the $50,000, as much as we don't want to, we're required to under the Federal Acquisition Regulation. I appreciate you trying to simplify it for staff, and I also want to acknowledge that you've given us latitude with our financial management procedures. In this one, we don't have a lot of latitude. Similarly, for the, the part that you talk about who our vendors are, the Code of Federal Regulations, Part 200, subsection 321, those six bullets that are there are straight from section B. So it's required that we have to go with those. So it's CFR 200 dot 321B. That, we have to do it, otherwise we get in trouble. The positive news is most of the people that we're working with already are doing more federal contracts than we do. And so they're already doing that.
Sort of an additional cost.
So there's no additional cost for us.
Okay.
And then on to the bid requirements. The state does, this is just good information. The state does require us, for your awareness, for purchases under $5,000, it's preferred that we have two telephonic references. So it might be transparent operationally, but some of this already happens because we have to do it. It's just not in front of you all the time, and it becomes evident when we go into audit and we have to demonstrate that we've done our due diligence instead of three verbal, three written quotes. The bids is where it becomes most problematic, and the sealed bids doesn't hit Minnesota till 175,000. And just to make sure I didn't miss anything, I will confirm with our attorney, did I say all of that correctly?
Well stated, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll make a motion to approve as drafted.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, and then E, Jeremy as well.
This one is the request to go out for bid for a recycling contract. This is kind of a nice to have, not sure if it's feasible, but we've talked in the past about how in some cities, it can be more efficient to do contracting for both universal trash and recycling at the same time. Is it possible to just get pricing with that as an option as part of the recycling proposal? And we can determine when we get those in, if it would make sense for Corcoran to do. I know a lot of folks complain about the ratcheting escalation of garbage prices and having to call and complain to get their price back to what it was three months ago. It might be a nice way to improve quality of life at minimal cost, but I'm not sure if it's too late for us to consider that at this point.
So I, I like, another positive reason for us to look at this is the wear and tear on our roads and multiple vehicles going down those roads. And so a, a single refuse hauler would make a lot of sense for a community of our size. But for this particular RFP, the timeline would be off. So my request would be give staff some time to go and do some analysis and go out and see what the market could sustain. And then us to bring that back to you as a proposal to consider for a single hauler potential.
Would it be likely to be cheaper if you got one vendor to do both recycling and garbage?
At this point with initial cursory look, because when we, we got the note, staff did do some, just, we're not sure. But it also has some potential other triggers. So if we go to a single hauler right now, we don't have to deal with, it's called section or Part 13, Chapter 13, related to organics. But if you go to a single for the recycle, we're able to use our single site, drop site because we're a city of under 10,000, and we do have refuse haulers right now that cannot meet that requirement. And so if we have a single refuse hauler that can meet the requirement and does recycling for us, that could trigger organics, but I don't know that for certain. Staff has to do some analysis and understand what the second and third order effects of that proposal would be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just real quick on that, too. I've been part of that, trying to get it into one hauler for cities, and usually the citizens are stating things like what happened to free trade and those kind of things, and competitive prices, those kind of things. So we did that over in Maple Grove for about three years, and then it was challenged. So if, if it is something we do, I'd support going down to one hauler, two, to save on all of our, all of our roads and stuff. But I don't know if we can, can we do something like that?
So, so the reason refuse haulers wouldn't like it is because it does lock them into a predictable rate for a window of time. And then when that window of time ends, you have to renegotiate the contract, and we go out for RFP again. And so in terms of getting a reasonable, the best rate that we could for the residents, it's more probable that with a single hauler, we can find a best rate. As opposed to it's changing based upon what the market's doing all the time. The challenge of it is the second and third order effects. You know, what happens when you have a single hauler and they're not meeting your standards? I encountered that in Shakopee, in which they had to get rid of the single hauler and then try and find another hauler. And in that case, prices went up significantly.
Just, I'd love to be able to do it, but we need to be
Probably smart about it.
Careful.
So staff has some work to do for analysis in order to check feasibility. Because right now, I know for certain one of the vendors couldn't meet the scale of responsibility currently within the community. Or at least that's what they said.
And I do, kind of on the opposite side of that, I appreciate staff taking the time to go through some of our neighbors and see what systems they do, the open or the, we term it the organized. Realizing that Rogers, Dayton, Medina, Hornet, Ozzata, all do the city-selected, yeah, RFP, I'd assume, recycling collection is, I think, good to know. Because I have had some people reach out about why do we only allow one hauler for the recycling? Medina actually has a pretty good write-off on their website of why that is and what, how it saves money on maintenance in the roads and wear and tear and all that stuff. But I think it makes sense, and hopefully we'll get some better pricing here with competitive RFP here. Anything else? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve.
All right, do a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
When you're done with consent, on to open forum, which we moved to after consent. So Jay, would you like to walk us through for any items not on today's agenda?
Yes, so if anybody would like to speak on something not on the agenda, you give me a public comment card. Fill that out, give it to me, and then you have a five-minute timeline. Please address the council. You're able to share what you want to, as long as it's respectful. And, and for something not on the agenda, I have one card today, Mr. Mayor. And that is Mr. Ken Streeter, who has moved to the podium. Please state your name and your address.
And just to add quick, typically we don't respond or have a back and forth. Staff will take notes of those things you need, you'd like us to follow up on.
My name is Ken Streeter, 6900 Winnetka Circle, Broken Park, Minnesota, 55428. I'm happy to be here with you tonight. I don't know if you know, I've been stuck in an elevator for over a while. So I'm really happy to be here.
We had you on video, Ken.
I'll tell you, and thank God I'm a patient guy, and I didn't know I had claustrophobia until the first 45 minutes.
That'll do it.
And then all of a sudden, I started realizing. Listen, I just want to readdress some of the things we talked about at the last meeting. And I want you to kind of reconsider, with all the respect I ask you, to reconsider some of your positions. I want to start out by saying thank you. The staff report that they presented to you at the last meeting was, was very well done and very thorough, and I think addressed many issues beyond what typically is addressed in a concept plan. I worked very hard to find a particular developer that we brought to this meeting because I wanted to have them provide a product that was not the same as a lot of other products that you have in your city. And, and they did that. They did that. And I don't want to lose them. I don't want to lose them. But if we wait, you know, my four clients waited four years. The city wanted to go light industrial. They worked on it for four years. I wasn't involved. And they have good people. I, I know some of the people that were involved in that project, and I know they worked hard to try to make that happen, and the market told us that wasn't a good use for that land. And so I suggested that we maybe try a different approach. And, and in that approach, I would like you to consider the reguiding of the property, but not wait till the comp plan comes out, because we don't want to wait another three or four years. You know, I mean, they, they would like to sell their property. I think this is a good location for the product that, that we're recommending. I thought your suggestion, Councilmember Frederick, was, was good. Let's, let's put the light industrial where the light industrial people want to go, and we can do that on the next comp plan. But this isn't where they want to go. And by the way, when we first took over this assignment, we called some people that we've worked with for years, and they thought I was smoking someone in my cigar when I suggested that they build a light industrial out there. And so I think it's important for us to, to recognize that. The residents have reached out to me right after I put my sign up, and then subsequently when they apparently found out we were on, up for an item here last week. Several have called. I, you know, somewhere between five and six people have called. And the first thing I get is, because I do so much commercial, they all thought I was going to do a retail project there. They didn't want that, and they didn't want the light industrial. And the comment was, we don't want more of what we already have in town. And I think the, the presentation or the submission that was made gives us a variety to that, and I think it's important that it'll, it'll support your downtown as well with, with those types of residents. The neighborhood input has been pretty direct and, and very supportive, very supportive. I think there's two signs of that. Nobody showed up at our concept meeting except one lady, and I know she supports me because she told me. So, you know, I think that's a consideration that, that you should have. The only thing, additional comment I'd like to make on this is that the site, you know, when I first came to you and talked to you about this site, I pointed out there were a lot of, of issues with the site itself. There's some grade and topo issues. The access points are set. You want a park trail. I'm not arguing about the park trail. I'm just saying that's another thing that had to be accommodated. We've got a creek. We've got a gas line. And we've got a tough fight to try to meet the density within some of the code requirements that, that your city has. You know, you push it left, and then you got a problem on the right. You push it right, you got a problem on the left. So, you know, I, I really would ask you to, to, oh, and one other thing, I believe I'm correct when I say this, Lanter, maybe you can correct me. You know, I think your code doesn't allow townhouses on Larkin.
So if it is reguided to low-density residential, we would not allow for townhomes? If it's medium residential, townhomes would be allowed?
I think. And, and I want to tell you a little bit about, and again, I'm not talking down to you, but I'll tell you my experiences. Townhouses are really hitting tough times with lenders, with buyers, with everybody. And that's from Shakopee to Dayton. I'm working on, on projects like this in those communities and some in between. And, and everybody is coming back to me to change their plan because
One second. Do you have, that was time, if you have another couple minutes, we can see if council
I'll move to give them a few more minutes.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
If they'd finished up.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thanks, and thanks for the courtesy of putting me on the agenda.
That's a problem.
So I thought the people did a good job of laying it out, and I guess the final comment would be that we have an opportunity here to make a good neighborhood for you. This is going to be a good neighborhood for this city for a very long time. So I respectfully request that you give it all the consideration you possibly can. I'm happy to answer questions if you want to.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I had no other cards.
Okay.
No comments. If I could follow up with one comment, Mr. Mayor, on that, that I think would be helpful for council to be aware. So I, I received guidance from council after that concept plan presentation to, to explore the economic impact of the request. And, and so I'm really happy to report that we will have a meeting on the 14th of July to start that process. And we've been able to get Northland to include it within the scope of their normal long-term financial planning because some other things have come off the table this year. So it will not cost us anymore. It will be on the timeline of our normal long-term financial plan, and it will be briefed to council on October 23rd.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Okay, on to consent. Planning business. We have one item, 7A, which is the agribusiness zoning ordinance amendment. Does it say Dwight or a?
Mic dropped.
Mic dropped. You picked up a cigar and dropped it.
It works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a quick presentation if we can switch over the slide. Try and keep it brief here, but yeah, 7A tonight is the agribusiness zoning ordinance amendment. This is a request from Margaret and John Fernandez, who are requesting this ordinance amendment to establish an agribusiness as an allowed use within the rural residential district so that they would be allowed to operate a wine tasting room on their property at 230, 23020, County 130. So some quick background, last September, the city council reviewed a concept plan for the wine tasting room. Through this review, it was found that the use was not compatible with a couple of the uses within the zoning ordinance. The closest uses identified were either the conditional home occupation license or the event center. And the issues with that is that the conditional home occupation license wouldn't allow, it would, well, let me back up. The conditional home occupation license would allow customers to visit the property. For the wine tasting room would not allow employees on the site, whereas the event center could allow employees and vendors to work on-site. However, hosting events is only a portion of the applicant's proposal and doesn't capture the entirety of their operations. So because of that, at that time, council suggested that the applicants explore an agribusiness ordinance that would apply more to their operation and their needs. So specifically, an agribusiness or agrotourism is defined as a form of commercial enterprise that links agricultural production and/or processing, processing with tourism to attract visitors onto a farm, ranch, or other agricultural business for the purposes of entertaining or educating the visitors while generating income for the farm, ranch, or business owner. So the proposed ordinance before each night is based on a review of a number of established agribusiness ordinances from cities that are comparable in size to the city of Corcoran, as well as the existing zoning ordinance requirements to ensure consistency throughout the code. Through this review, staff identified several performance standards that should be addressed within the agribusiness ordinance itself. So with some, with some amendments to the ordinance, the draft ordinance from Planning Commission, some of these requirements are minimum parcel size of four acres. The business should either be located on a major roadway, so a county road or a state highway, or be within 2,000 or 2,500 feet from an intersection with a major roadway. The traffic generated from the agribusiness must not create a nuisance to nearby residents by way of traffic or noise. All parking needs must be accommodated on-site and comply with the parking standards outlined within the performance standards of the zoning ordinance. And same with the maximum structure size that would have to comply with the footprint requirements that are outlined within the zoning ordinance as well. So noise, no sound amplification systems may be used after 10:00 PM unless otherwise approved by the city council. Any stages or amps must be oriented away from any residence within 500 feet of the property line and oriented away from the nearest residential property. And then music-based events must be limited to the hours of 11:00 AM and 10:00 PM on weekends and holidays for a maximum of six hours per day. And outdoor lighting cannot exceed 0.1-foot candle as measured from the property line. Sanitary facilities such as bathrooms must be adequate for the number of attendees determined by the Minnesota State Building Code. And any outdoor activity must be set back 100 feet from the adjacent residential structures. So Planning Commission and staff recommend approval of the draft ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance to allow the agribusiness as an interim use within the rural residential district, as well as the findings of fact for the ordinance amendment.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Dwight?
I have one. Do we intend to include apple orchards, too?
With the definition that is being amended within this, within this application, apple orchards and businesses of that nature would fall underneath that umbrella.
Okay, very good.
Little ones bother.
We could use an apple orchard.
Yeah, I wouldn't be opposed to one. They're fun.
Any other questions?
Just real quick, Mr. Mayor. Dwight, just a, like a seasonal, seasonal parking while we have parking lot requirements and, and those kind of things. I listened to the Planning Commission meeting and such. Everything is under an interim use permit and such on these things. So would the parking for seasonal, if, and we do have an apple orchard, if nobody knows that, we do have one, while there's issues there, that's a whole other thing, but the seasonal side of stuff, a corn maze, those kind of things. In the interim use permit, we could do that on a gravel parking lot or in the grass kind of parking for overflow parking. I'm trying to put it together quickly without having to refer all the way back to the ordinance and such.
So currently, the way that it's written, it, it does refer back to the performance standards of parking lots, which only allows the gravel lots within the commercial, the rural commercial districts. So if that's something that you want to see within the agribusiness zoning ordinance amendment, we can amend the draft ordinance to include gravel parking lots for these types of events if that's
I would also add, we have very, there are very limited standards that gravel parking lots can be approved by the city engineers. I think we'd also want that to apply. So if it's something that is more than, I believe, nine months out of the year, we would want to still see that paid. That's typically only something that goes very seasonal-based.
Okay, that's, that's questions that I've gotten and such. And then another question about amplified sound and those kind of things. Can we put it in the ordinance that amplified sound and those kind of things come back to us?
I think they got to apply for a sound waiver, didn't they?
They got to apply for a sound waiver, but it says on They got to apply for a sound waiver, but it says on, on holidays and those kind of things, they can go from, for six hours and stuff. I'd rather that be treated the same as all of the other ones that we do. Corcoran Lions Park, the station applies for those, those permits when they have. I'd rather have a permit requested and undocumented than just random showing up at any of these places. I want to have fun. Granted, we have fun and we, we do stuff. But I'd rather know about it than all of a sudden, hey, they're amplified sound at whatever.
I think it might depend on your definition of music event.
Just asking, asking those questions out loud, so. And again, this doesn't really pertain to any event center or anything like that. This is just for agribusiness zoning ordinance amendment, which, all the way from, how do I want to say it? In this case, a wine tasting with music to a farmer's market. All of a sudden, on the side of the road in the field, kind of deal, that covers the broad scope of agribusiness, doesn't it?
So for, just for clarification, for the agribusinesses that have one-off amplification events of some sort, you would like to have a provision within the code that says that they are required to come back to council for those sound waiver permits? Is that?
That's what I'd like to see, because right now, the way it's kind of written is every holiday and every weekend, they can have music events from eleven AM to ten PM. Every weekend and every holiday. I don't think that's right. I don't know what the rest of the.
Where did that come from? Was that requested specifically in?
No, that's, that was a standard from one of the other ordinances, the sample ordinances that I used for reference. So I think we can amend that. I don't think anyone's married to that.
I'm just, I'm going back to the most recent religious deal of they can do whatever every Saturday, Sunday at their, at their leisure or at their request. We're out in the country for a reason. I want to respect this stuff. But I'd, I'd rather it come back just as frequent as we have other organizations and stuff ask for those, those flexes of amplified sound and stuff. As far as the no sound amplification systems may be used out stores after ten PM unless otherwise, that's just like an open bonfire and stuff. But music events, every holiday, every weekend from eleven AM to ten PM, I don't want to open that door. That's okay. If everybody else agrees.
So would you suggest removing that and changing it to a, would we even need, if we just removed it, the default would be that to come in for a permit?
So what I'm hearing right now is we replace everything underneath item six in the draft ordinance with sound needs or amplification needs would need to be reviewed by the council through the sound waiver permit unless otherwise approved by the council. If there's some minor, like routine amplification things, like every Sunday, if there's.
I'm thinking just six C. Unless Dean's thinking the other.
I, that's all I was thinking, six C. It just. And again, I'm going back to the specific location and stuff. This isn't a neighborhood that Rush Creek, whatever it's called, that neighborhood. No, it's a neighborhood, Rush Creek. What is it? What's the road name? I forgot. Boulevard, is that the one it is? This, the, the wine tasting place is right in that neighborhood, and it's a pretty quiet place. And while everybody respects what is in front of us, just opening it up to every Saturday and Sunday and holidays, they get amplified sound from eleven AM to ten PM. That's not, that's not okay in my mind.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Can I add a couple of things?
Sure.
Just questions I have. So if they're renting the property, would that be a temporary rental license then, or does that not apply?
So the current rental licensing that the city has is related to the dwelling, dwelling units, unless so the business is.
So if they're renting the dwelling, then a rental license would apply.
Right. But I was wondering if we have like a rental license in place for like venues in the city, if we should start to get more of them. Would we need that? Could that then maybe hinge on the noise amplification? If you have a venue and you're going to rent it, that would be part of the process or not?
I don't think, so our rental licenses are, currently what we're set up for rental licensing is long-term rentals. So for renting out like a space, and I would say that's more of an event center than this agribusiness. Agribusiness is going to be the property owner who's.
Okay. Okay. And then I noticed under C, there's a commercial kennel license or a commercial kennel. And it talks about having secured fenced areas. Didn't we put, I thought we were not allowing dog kennels anymore in Corcoran. Am I wrong?
So that, that was part of.
Talked about.
That was recently amended, I believe, back in April. That's just the existing code. The redline is everything pertaining to the, to the agribusiness ordinance specifically. But the commercial kennels were recently amended back in April or May, if I'm remembering correctly.
Okay.
So no concern on that?
I'm still a little concerned, I guess.
On the dog?
On the, on the commercial kennels, yeah.
So that would be, I think, a discussion outside of the scope of the current amendment. The application in front of us tonight is specific to the agribusiness.
Okay. And then my last question was, is how do we monitor traffic nuisance? Like, what is our measurement for that? Like, is it fifteen cars, twenty cars, twenty-five cars? And how do we monitor that? Like, why do we even have that in there? Because it seems like something that's going to be really difficult to.
Yeah, so we, it was this language from our, we, I think we're also, we're looking at language that we have similar to our home occupation license. And we do have like a traffic gauge. I think that's where that's coming from. If we don't want to attempt to monitor it, I think it would be, you know, if there was a complaint, staff would probably go out and have to collect data for a period of time. And that would be how you monitor it. If you don't want us to have that, we don't need that. But that was just a proposed performance standard.
Any thoughts on that?
I just, I think it's like, if we're not going to enforce it, if it's really something that's going to put more onus on staff, maybe it's better to not have it in there. And then just if there's a complaint, then we deal with it on a one-by-one basis, assuming that there won't be.
If we don't have a standard in code, then there's not a complaint.
So right now, I don't think it actually puts the onus on staff. I think it puts the onus on the resident in order to complain that there is a nuisance. And they're determining what the standard of nuisance is. And then, and then we respond. And then if it requires a greater response, then we bring it to council to discuss further the degree of the impact of the nuisance. But the, the impetus right now is, is on the resident to identify that it is disrupting their life.
Okay. Thank you.
Where's council on Dean's suggestion of the changing six C to the permit? Or the, to seeking individually.
Amplified sound.
Amplified sound permit.
To me, it kind of hinges on what we mean by amplified sound. Because like, some of the apple orchards that we go to in the fall, they'll have like ambient music out. I think that's reasonable. But I think, you know, erecting a stage and having a band.
This is music. This is music events. The announcement that the wagon's leaving and such, I'm okay with all of those stuff. I'm talking just the music event.
I agree, because I think what you're talking about would fall more under A, which is the.
Just a general announcement.
Which could be up until ten o'clock.
Yeah, that sounds right to me.
I mean, that works for me right now. If I have a family deal going, I just yell really loud and everybody hears me. But the neighbor, I'm so far away from the other neighbors. But when it gets close like this, those announcements are needed to run what they're doing. But as far as the music events and those kind of things, that's what I'm, would rather see a permit.
So Dean, do you want to take a crack at a motion to amend six C to be like, go through the permit process as discussed?
Yeah, six, the only change, other than everything else that's here, the only change was six C, change it to all music events require.
Council approval.
Council approval, noise.
Whatever that process is called.
Sound waiver permit application prior to the events and such.
Okay, I have a motion of a second.
If, if you need more specifics, so. It's going to take me twenty minutes to read it down.
I think we're good. Motion second.
I'm sorry. Can I ask one more question? It's five acre minimum is what the agribusiness is.
And this is just for the change, not on the.
Okay.
Okay. End of program. Any other discussion on the change? All those in papers say aye?
Aye.
And then to answer Council Friedrich's question, it was initially set at five acres. And then after the planning commission discussion, that minimum lot size got bumped down to four acres.
Okay. I'm just wondering, like, I have a four acre lot, and that seems really small if you're going to be holding events. That would be a concern, I think. And I think that's not enough acreage.
I feel like there was a lot of discussion on that.
Okay.
I think, I kind of had the same opinion that five acres really would be the minimum that makes sense to fit everything on there. But they felt that they really wanted to provide maximum flexibility for property owners that might be more creative with their space. And so that's where they got the four acres. But that certainly.
Are there a number of more lots in town that are four acres than five?
I don't, I, we would have to pull significant data to be able to answer that. I would say, in, just knowing some of the lots that we've worked with, I would say five acres tends to be the minimum to be able to build a parking lot that's actually going to service.
I think it makes more sense.
Yeah. And with five acres, like my neighbors, I mean, I know Corcoran has bigger lots just in general. But like, if I had an extra acre, which would be like the property behind me, the whole field, to me, my neighbors would still be that very happy with me that I am doing this on this property because the parking lot is going to be in someone's backyard, adjacent either across my street or to the. So I'm not sure how I feel about that small of a lot.
What do you see, four acres?
Could I make a recommendation? So I'm sorry, I just came and I saw some thriving in Barron, Wisconsin. There's, there's a lot along the road. And I was checking them out, because we're having this conversation, agribusinesses. One was local bread. So they're making sourdough breads. So they have a lot about the same size as yours, and they're operating out of their garage, because you're not going to get a lot of traffic there. And what they had by the road was a sign that says, we're going to be at this farmer's market on this day, and then we're going to be here. So the agribusiness is operating out of there, but it's not actually generating the kind of traffic that we're thinking about for like the wine tasting, where you're going to have a lot of people there. So, so it's creating flexibility to operate. And then we have in the IUP process, an opportunity to discuss, is this going to be able to support the level of traffic that you're considering? So we do have checks and balances to ensure that we're not going to end up with something out of reasonable operational capability.
Or a paved parking lot next to like your neighbor's front yard.
Yeah, I think that's what we should discuss next. But I think we're a little, and I was doing this too, mixing up a little bit of more of the event center type stuff rather than the agribusiness in my head. And like, it makes sense maybe why we'd want five acre plus for event centers. And where an agribusiness could be something as small as that, it makes sense.
Like, if we had a council member that had honey, and they decided they wanted to sell honey out of their barn.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Yeah, if we only had a council member that.
You guys know how you can get honey for me. I ain't putting up signs.
Or sold dahlias at the end of their driveway, because they grow dahlias in their backyard.
There you go.
Yeah.
So are we all good with four for this?
Yeah, I think there are some businesses where it'll be adequate, but not all businesses.
Yep. And then I think the only other remaining item is the, that we kind of touched on earlier, and Michelle just touched on, was the gravel versus paved parking lots. And Natalie threw it out as potentially maybe, if it's a part of the year, what's the term?
Yeah, I think we could, I don't know exactly where to add it. I'll defer to Dwight. But I think we could add in a standard that the city council can allow gravel parking lot through the IUP subject to.
Seasonal?
Subject to subdivision, okay, one zero sixty dot zero sixty subdivision three B. Because there's, there's nine standards that the city engineer would look at to determine if a gravel parking lot makes sense. So I think that that would be what makes the most sense to refer to.
And that would be for all?
But yeah, so it would be subject to city council approval and city engineer approval.
So it'd give us some authority to say where.
Yep, without requiring a variance.
Could it also be a grass parking lot, or does it have to be gravel?
I would say grass parking lots are going to get absolutely destroyed. If you're regularly relying on it, you would want it to be some kind of material that's able to support the parking. I think anything else, we probably want to look at a variance and have it be a one-off basis if they have a proposal for some. I know there are examples of reinforcement for grass, so that you can park on grass. I know it's very expensive. So sometimes people end up just doing a gravel parking lot and stuff. But I think if someone wanted to do that, we could, it would potentially be a variance. And if we are starting seeing a lot of requests, then we can update the code accordingly. So far, I haven't seen too many of those come in.
Well, because I was thinking if it was something that was just on the weekends, like on a Saturday, and you have people coming, it wouldn't make sense to do a full-blown parking lot if it's only one time per week. Because I think it's more appeasing to have grass than it is gravel in your neighbor's yard.
So our.
It depends what it is too.
It does, completely.
Yeah, I would say our nuisance code doesn't allow for parking on the grass. I know it happens sometimes. But as far as, I think, opening that up might start to get a little complicated. I think it would make sense for a one-off situation at this point. I think most businesses that we're talking to so far, they have a need for a parking lot, and then grass wouldn't make sense.
Where if Dean's selling honey out of his garage or barn, it would be parking in the driveway or pulling right up to the street, handing you a twenty and. So I think maybe we stick, we keep, well, no, we make the change to that effect.
Yeah, you can make a motion.
I'll make that motion to Natalie's.
I will second Natalie's motion.
Any discussion? All those in papers say aye?
Aye.
Okay, then the item, it's, the items itself. I think we can do this all together. Think so? I will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five, five fifty-two, summary ordinance twenty twenty-five, five fifty-three, and approve resolution twenty twenty-five sixty-nine.
So I'm moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. On to eight, which we added back in. We have eight A, which was originally six H for council. If you want to pull that up on your iPads. And then, I don't know, do you have anything to, to add, present?
Six H.
I.
Do you want to just?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything to present. Typically, we don't have items or slideshows for the consent agenda. But just recap, we went over this item back in April. And at that meeting, council directed us to, staff to work with the applicant to come to some agreement or middle ground for the needs for both sides. So staff had that meeting and a draft of what was discussed in that meeting is presented to you guys, to the council and city tonight. I will note that a revised version of resolution twenty-five dash thirty-eight was placed on the diocese with an added change to number eight, supposed to be redlined. Unfortunately, it turned out to be blue lined. That the roadway easements be reviewed and approved by the city attorney, since staff is expecting some minor changes from both sides tonight. So that won't hold up the, the easement agreement won't hold up the approvals tonight. We can continue working on it on the back end.
Gotcha. Sounds good. Everyone see that on there? I'll tell you one. Perfect.
So repeat what you just said, that the easement agreement can still be talked about if we say. So, repeat what you just said, that the easement agreement can still be talked about if we say yes to what's in front of us?
With that provision, yeah.
Typically, the council does not see roadway easements. Those are something that are worked through on the back end. We have a typical standard template that we P C with and then we just shared it because there were two paragraphs that come, that staff added, um, in working with the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Do you give us your name and address for the record and go right ahead?
My name is Melissa Solberg. My address is two seven one one five Paragon Drive in Rogers. However, I'm a Corcoran landlord. There's no address because it's an outlot. So, um, as you know, I was here in April, like Dwight said, and we did have a meeting on June fourth. Um, we really talked about the whole thing, um, really tried to make an agreement. My concern this evening is that the agreement is still heavily disputed. There's a lot of language that we're not okay with. And you were presented, or in the inner whole world, the neighbors who are watching my application were presented with an agenda packet that said that we had reached an agreement that matched what was attached. And that is not true. And then when that was, um, Dwight emailed me today that says, um, that staff revised the resolution to include a provision that clarifies the roadway easement agreement. Is subject to review and approval from the city attorney prior to the final plat being released or recording. This is a standard practice for agreements of this nature and allows legal review to proceed without delaying city council action. My concern this evening is that if you pass the resolution, there is no longer any feet to the fire for a stamp. As you can see, the provision says that only the city attorney has to approve it, no mutual agreement. So, I am concerned that right now.
It would still have to be signed by both parties.
Without a vest.
But any contract would have to be signed by both parties, so.
And I, I just heard that we, there can still be some discussion and negotiations related to that stuff. That's what I just heard, Melissa.
Right.
That it's not done with, it's just.
I also really don't like my revisions. So, if you approve and their feet aren't held to the fire and then I lose any, I could potentially lose any negotiating, and this is quick, I'll be very brief, but we do a.
Yep, we've got that in our.
Yes, I'm just, this is the line where the easement would go. So, during the meeting, we discussed, I said, we can't make an orphan lot. And they said, there was discussion about right-of-way versus easement, so we agreed to an easement, but we still, our driveway is right here, so we need a cross access. Because right now, they have exclusive right to the easement, which means apparently we have to levitate across. We can't do any improvements to our own driveway during the interim. We just want a cross right to.
John, can you speak to that? I don't know if that's accurate, understanding of that.
So, uh, mayor, members of council, the, um, I was given the understood business terms from staff and put them into an easement agreement, which was supplied to the applicant. Um, the goal on this was to reach the equivalent of effectively dedicated right-of-way, just in a different form that could have some of these other conditions. Uh, when the applicant spoke last, uh, before you, uh, there was mention of having an ongoing agricultural use, so that wanted, they wanted to have that normalized, so we did that. Additionally, I, I'm told that there were some discussions about, um, allowing the applicant some notice before the road would be constructed. And so, a, uh, a period of a year advanced notice was agreed to as a part of that. Those are both entered into the, into the easement agreement. Which again, is there to, uh, take the, take the place of, uh, of the dedicated right-of-way. Um, now, that doesn't preclude, uh, it, it does need to be an exclusive use because a roadway use is an exclusive use for the city. That doesn't mean that there's no access to it, but, uh, the city's right-of-way regulations would dictate where those access points would be using good engineering practices if a road is constructed.
And prior to that, they wouldn't need a specific approval to be able to cross the easement?
No, correct.
Yep.
Everything here.
It wouldn't be an inconsistent use with what's dedicated at that point. If, if there's a road there, obviously they have to contend with that.
Right.
Yep.
We would take exception to that, uh, because if it is an exclusive.
I'm sorry, sir, could you please state your name and your address?
Yeah, my, my name is Stephen Lake. I'm counsel for the applicant here. And, uh, my address is one hundred South Fifth Street, Indianapolis, Minnesota. But we take exception to that because if it is an exclusive easement, the city has the absolutely right, the absolute right to exclude somebody from that easement. And the provision also prohibits construction of any improvements in the easement to the city of Corcoran. The driveway is in the easement. There may need to be continuous improvements to that driveway to make sure that it's properly maintained. So, there is not an exception that would, um, there's not an exception that allows us to cross that easement at any point in time. Um, it may practically be the case, but there is no legal right for, uh, the applicant in this case to have app, access to that most southerly lot. And so, what we're trying to do is address that issue as well. What we have seen, we've done a data practices request from the city and we've seen a similar situation where the city had requested an easement. And the easement was gonna go over where the developer had planned some stormwater ponds. Um, again, in that situation, it was going to prohibit the use of stormwater ponds in that area. Ultimately, for that development, the city made a determination, they did not need the easement at that time. They would address it at the time of future development. That seems to make more sense here as well, where we've got a driveway that is coming through here. We've got an, an extra parcel that's being cut off by this road that is essentially incapable of being used for any type of the de- development. The concern that the applicant has is the ability to be able to more properly lay this out with future development. And this easement, uh, is going to prohibit any type of future development. It destroys value by leaving this little parcel here. If they, if the street is ultimately constructed, now you've gotta run your mowing equipment across the street to handle that parking and, and to hem, not the parking, but that outlot parcel off piece as well. So, there's a lot of problems with the location of where the easement is at, as by we've submitted some suggested revisions, uh, to try to address all of those concerns of the applicant.
Mr. Mayor, just if I may.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm reading this as just a general if development ever happens. They're reading it as that they're going to develop that property tomorrow and such. Everything we're writing, I, the way I write, the way I read it is for future and it's going to be a while before anything happens that way. Yes or no? What am, what am I missing? And then the other thing is, we've been talking with, about this for nearly a year now, as far as requests and stuff. Why haven't y'all agreed? Why are we wasting more time when we've got a deadline to finish this? What's going on?
Well, if I may, in the beginning, February of twenty, February of twenty-four, we did meet with the planning committee. We came up with a plan. I have a neat, uh, email. Before we hired Paul Auto Engineering for Auto and Associates, we had an email from Natalie that says, "Next steps will be dependent upon the number of lots proposed in the plat. Should two lots be proposed with each lot having separate driver approved by his account, then steps three and four above can be skipped. And three is submit a concept for staff, staff level review for an engineering memo that analyzes a public street connection." So, when we designed it and paid for it with Auto and Associates, we did not contemplate an easement.
But I thought that you wanted to buy this forty acres to put one house on it. Now, we're talking development. What?
The, the reason that we're, we're talking development is because the city's requested the easement.
Or future goes plat, so to speak, if something were to happen?
No, to a service wine and slot.
So.
So that we don't abandon a lot without access?
I, I, maybe Kevin might be able to speak to it a bit better than us, but the reality is, is the, specifically the properties to the east, there's several development rates. We're aware that Hennepin County will limit access just based on our experience of the access points. And so, part of this planning process is making sure that we are setting ourselves up for a future road connection because it could be that this lot never comes in front of us again for subdivision, or at least not at the time when we have the next subdivision come in.
If he were to, if he were to sell and subdivide, the county isn't gonna give him an access point on his property? We gotta go across somebody else's property?
It's possible that a roadway connection, yes, we have to plan for internal road connections and that has been a push from Hennepin County for a long time.
And it's been a practice in the city as we've done all of our other developments.
Yep. So, this is to reserve that. Um, now, if they were to come back in with a new subdivision, we could, like, the, this is just like the, the flag that we're planning right now. Um, it doesn't necessarily preclude future negotiations of where the final road alignment lines up, but this just gives us an earmark. This is where we would work with neighboring properties that come in for subdivision to have that alignment made. Uh, but, but it doesn't necessarily preclude a future discussion, especially if there is another subdivision application on these specific properties. Uh, but this does give us a ability to plan for an internal road connection in this area because there, this entire block south of County Road thirty, there is no internal road connection right now and we're trying to plan for that. Um, if you have anything to add, Kevin?
No, we'll just add with the road easement versus the right-of-way, we're letting them pick the location. So, we're not dictating where that is. We're just saying we need one across the property.
And that's something you can still do if we were to say yes, there, you could still keep working with.
Yeah, we're just, we're, we put that in their court to say, "We need X amount wherever you want it to cross." In some ways, I think that gives them more control over what happens around them because they get to say, "These are your landing points if I ever need to come across your property." If another property comes in first and they set those landing points, any redevelopment or development of this property would have to connect to that. So, in some cases, they get a choice to plant the flag, so to speak. We don't know when it will happen. We don't anticipate it happening for a while. Based on what they've shared in their narrative, it might be seventy-five plus years.
Yeah.
So, but we do have to, but it could be tomorrow if they sell, so we have to prepare for the unknown. That's the change we have.
But the concern is that this is, there is no plan, again, according to our data practice, data practices request, there is no plan by the city for any type of internal road network. Not a single plan. Nothing is out there in, in existence. With respect to locating the road, it's a very, very small area of being able to locate the road. So, what this is doing is creating a problem, again, the future development, which may be seventy-five years down the road, is creating problems today for my client. In the sense of it's creating a exclusive easement across her property that.
But it still hasn't been agreed to, so there's still some of that there. I'm, if, if I may, I'm, I'm gonna go off and you tell me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, let me know. We just had a development happen on the south side of ten, west of Bechtel Road. Five parcels with an existing property being the sixth on that property. And Dwight, you're nodding your head yes. Why didn't the county make us go over to the dead-end property to the west of that property? When that was, when that was already a city road? How did they grant access to that property when we had a city road just on the backside of those sixty acres or on the west side?
We're talking about upper acres?
Yep.
We're talking about, okay, so they allowed the existing roadway, the existing driveway to remain for the existing parcel?
Yep.
And, but they do have, they did have a clause in their memo that if there is a local roadway connection in the future, either if the private drive to the west turns into a public street, uh.
That's a private drive.
That's a private drive and so that's why.
That's my mistake.
Yeah, so if, but if that were to become a public street, the county does expect them to connect to that local roadway. So, they allowed an existing condition to remain, but they do have expectation that if conditions change, that that would also change. And they would, at that time, work with the property because they, they have the permitting authority for that.
But then the, the forty acres to the west of this property that goes all the way down to ten, pretty much the same as this property, already has a field driveway in it. So, why are we talking?
Well, on ten, you've got a creek.
You what?
On ten, you've got to cross the creek.
And there's wetlands and.
And wetland areas, so all adjacent to ten is all wetland and creek.
But again, the thirty side of it too is the same, I see it as the same as what?
So.
There's, there's already, uh, the field road into the forty acres to the west of them. Why?
Field roads don't necessarily remain at, because field roads have an agriculture.
A field driveway, because that's what that property had was a field driveway.
No, they had, they had a driveway to the residence.
No, there was a driveway right where the road ended up being.
But that's where their, no, the house had a drive, an existing driveway and then the road was in addition to the east. The, the existing driveway for the house for upper acres is what was permitted to remain. I would say this actually is probably most similar to Bechtel Farms plat. At that point, we took the easement for, a road easement for Garden Lane.
Okay.
At the right of.
We took, yeah, we took the right of way for Garden Lane and they, we didn't, we told them they did not need to construct the road, but we went ahead and took the right-of-way for that. While we wait for another property to redevelop to have that connection of Garden Lane.
You're, you're helping me get, you're helping me get to my point is, so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna play the easement for the power line. You've got a power line running through this property. You didn't have a choice on that easement and such. You, staff has it written up and it can still be talked about and where that easement goes for that future road in forty to seventy years, whatever it is. So, why can't we just say, "We approve this," but yet it still keeps going? Why is there hesitation saying if we approve it, then we can't hold anybody's feet to the fire and negotiations can't continue on the yield? Why, why comments like that?
So, we may not be able to approve all of the redline changes that were submitted because it would effectively make it not function as a roadway easement. But if there are changes that would allow for, so if it's an encroachment agreement through there that protects the driveway, we can take a look at that. It's not that we can't negotiate, it's just that there's some terms in our standard drive, or our standard roadway easement that we apply to every property owner that has provided us with a roadway easement that we're not gonna be able to negotiate on. Because there's a purpose as to why that language is in there.
So, how can we rework or whatever to pass this on and let this negotiation continue?
The resolution.
Resolution of.
That's fair.
Yep, the, the way that it's been modified, Dwight read it earlier.
Okay.
I would ask that, you know how when you guys do the consent agenda, A through G, things get passed very quickly? Does this get tabled until the next meeting and then hopefully we have a signed agreement between the.
We don't.
Can't, we're getting a timeline.
The timeline will run out.
It's a window issue at this point.
You said you will not pay another dime, which if we don't hit that timeline, you've gotta put in another application if that's correct.
We'd have to approve or deny.
We have to approve or deny and I would say, again, the most legally defensible decision in front of me tonight is the resolution prepared by staff. So, I would not recommend denying the application.
And again, let's go on back to, we've been talking about this since February twenty twenty-four, so.
Again, we, we would add that we don't think the city of Corcoran's ordinance allows for this easement because the easement itself is not, um, uh, reasonable or necessary for the development. It also doesn't meet constitutional muster in the sense that there's no essential nexus or rough proportionality, um, to the proposed development. We believe this is related solely to, uh, future development and it can be held off until future development takes place. But we want that on the record and we don't believe that, uh, the city has the legal authority to request an easement when there is no plans for any type of an in, internal road, road net, network. There's nothing to suggest that this road is reasonably necessary at any time for maybe even seventy-five years. So, it's our position that this easement is not necessary for this development.
John, do you have anything you wanna add?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it, it's staff's position that it, it is necessary as a part of the planning for the future network. These discussions have been had.
Okay.
We're at an impasse on this issue, it appears. So what we're trying to do is, is determine whether or not there are reasonable conditions that can be reached or agreed upon in this easement. I don't think staff is going to bring anything back or recommend anything to you that is less than what they will require to operate a roadway. Having driveway use of the entirety of the area on the property is in conflict of the roadway use. Now, that doesn't mean that there won't be access for the property, of course, that can be maintained. But, you know, and I, I've seen the draft that was sent back. You know, my, my review of that suggests that it's intended to, to, to give less than, than the roadway interest. And, and, and maybe that's just reflective of the fundamental disagreement between staff and the applicant on this. But they've made this point, staff has reviewed it, engineers reviewed it, and they've made the determination that staff believes it is necessary, applicant does not. So the recommendation before you is to include that as a requirement. We will keep working with them if there are terms that can be reached.
Yep.
But on the issue of whether or not the road is required, I think we, we may be at an impasse, I don't know. But we have to get past that in order to, to get to the more, what I would call, secondary terms related to easement.
Thank you.
So then again, one last question, I'm back to the power line easement. The power line is, what is easement in that power line? Is it a hundred and twenty feet, it's sixty feet, both sides of the center?
We have to pull up the survey real quick.
In that, the landowner has no no control over that power line easement, right?
It's a private easement, I don't know that I've reviewed it specific to this property.
The power line is a private easement.
Because it's nothing to do with the city.
Yeah.
The, the difference between the power line easement is that that was quite in place, presumably with the consent of a previous landowner.
Okay. Well, knowing, knowing the power line, nobody had any consent to do whatever, they just put it there. So that's a whole nother conversation down the road, so. So if I may, I'd, I'd like to recommend approval of the resolution.
Twenty twenty-five thirty-eight.
The twenty, twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight, with the caveat of continued discussion on the road easement location, what else can I say?
And council?
Yeah, currently it's drafted that.
Which is included in that, that added.
It's already there.
That A.
I'll, I'll make that recommendation.
Motion or recommendation?
Sure. Motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
So we can be, we can move on. Again, I'm, I'm disappointed it is taking this long for whatever communication, whatever distraction and stuff. We've been talking about this, and I continue to hear the one thing, all I want to do is build my house, live there, and let my neighbor continue to farm the property like he's done for a couple of different generations, so.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
A whole second.
A whole second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. That's the end.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, round two. New business, we have a request for proposals for space needs analysis for city facilities, Jay?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members, this has been a, a long time coming, a discussion overdue. So if you go around our facilities, all of our facilities right now, we are beyond maximum capacity. We don't have places to store things, we don't have spaces for people to work. And it's evident in every single space that you enter where we're currently trying to provide quality services. Recognizing that, we also have to plan for the future. So in the present, we are in need. And that proposes that in the future, we're going to have an even greater need. So this request for proposal for space needs is seeking a partner to help us think through that process. In preparing for this RFP, I was able to get RFPs from six other cities, and I had discussion with other city administrators about their processes and how they did this. And the reason the, this RFP is constructed the way that it is, is to both provide latitude. So one of the things I will acknowledge is the schedule is aggressive. The reason for the aggressive schedule is a couple of things. One, that will help us identify who really wants to partner with us to solve this pressing problem. Part of the reason it's aggressive is because it is a pressing problem, and we need to find a resolution in a timely fashion. But we also need to be prudent in terms of our analysis, and that means we need to find a partner that is going to provide us quality analysis. When I was at the state conference for police, I talked with three different vendors that do this regularly, and I spoke with them. All three of them had done facilities that included a civic campus, that had public safety component, and other administrative service needs. And so I know for certain that there's three vendors that are, that are looking forward to this hitting, but I suspect that there's going to be even more vendors. Now, also admittedly, it doesn't go into specificity, other than that the requested vendor is going to partner with staff and sit down with each of our departments to talk, and also sit down with council to talk about our current needs and our projected future needs. One of the projected future needs that I need clarity from council this evening is about what council desires for fire service. So looking at the past discussions, and as we're having the fire service conversation, this is, I think, different than the fire service conversation. What we identified in our last work session is we have a gap in the city. And the proposal has been to have a facility fill that gap. The, the question is, who will that partner be that, that comes alongside us to help us solve that problem? My proposal is that we don't need to solve who the partner is today, we need to solve what we're going to need to put in that space.
Because various outcomes could.
Yeah, so, so, so we have time to figure out who it will be and what it will be. But the question that I need clarity on is, does it need to be? Do we need a fire station as part of our civic campus? That's going to be an important variable, so that's one thing that I'd ask from council tonight, is clarification on that question. The other one is, at this time, we limited their scope to current city properties. So you'll see in the proposal, there's three properties that have facilities, and then I only, of all the properties that the city owns, I only included two. Because in talking with other cities, our current needs, as they stand, will need a minimum of five to ten acres, depending on how it's constructed, whether we go up or whether we go out. And so I didn't include, for analysis from the vendors in the, in the proposal, anything that was less than ten acres, so that we could both park it and put a building on it. And so that leaves us with two parcels right now. The northern part of the Rockford property adjacent to ten, and then the property that's north of the city campus along one sixteen. That's why it's only those two parcels. I currently don't have included in the proposal, going out and looking at other parcels within the city. Because with the present market, it felt cost prohibitive after past conversations. But also, it doesn't limit it from the scope of the conversation. So if they were to find that, as we're discussing that, that's something that they could propose us considering, and we would bring that to council for proposing.
I'd say keep it as is, and if something like that comes up, bring it back. But I think we have a good, a good potential site or two that's included in this that we start with, and if a golden opportunity comes up.
So, so some of the specificity, if I could say, so some of the specificity of our requirements are going to come out in the conversations with departments. Rather than us trying to, to scope it, I thought that folks who have partnered with other cities could help us flush out what our requirements are, better than us presuming that we know exactly what we need. And so that's part of the reason why it's framed the way that it is. And I would also acknowledge the fact that that could seem like, oh, that's really open. One of the things that I think is helpful about this process, I admittedly grabbed a lot of Chan Hessen's. So this is Chan Hessen's proposal with modifications, because I liked their outcome. And their outcome, what they had was they did an interview process to figure out who the best partner was going to be with them. And so another thing for us to consider is if we find in this process that we don't flush out a partner that we feel comfortable and confident with, we can go out for the process again. And if we recognized some gaps, because we're being so aggressive, we actually wouldn't lose a lot of time. So if within the next four weeks, when their proposals are supposed to come to council, we didn't get what we wanted, we could tweak up our proposal in order to ensure that we filled those gaps. And so that's, that was the logic behind why it is the way that it is. I do need clarification on fire services. And subject to your questions, my request is that this evening, that you either propose it as written, or you give us necessary adjustments. Last thing that I'd say is the, the criteria for evaluation. Recognizing how we've traditionally operated, I went heavy on the cost. But I also don't want that to say that that's going to be the primary driver. That's part of the interview process and the evaluation process. It is a criteria, but that would probably be the most likely area for tweak, if we wanted to.
I like where it's at personally. Because this, financials is important, but it doesn't lock us into just a little bit, and then we're stuck with whoever. Jeremy, did you have a question on?
Yeah, I was, wanted to clarify, when you say you limited the scope to two properties, we're still looking at all of the existing city properties, like Public Works, this facility, as potential homes for portions of city services, correct?
That's correct. So the three places that we currently have, so there's Kane Road, there's along nineteen, and then there's this campus. So those are the first three within the proposal that will be evaluated. And then two properties that currently don't have any constructed buildings on them. And while staff does have ideas, we're also wanting to allow these vendors to come up with their ideas, before we try and guide their ideas. So I didn't include what we've been talking about or thinking about in the proposal, so that we don't put our thumb on the scale and potentially miss out on an opportunity that we'd never thought of or considered.
That's the right way to do it.
Just a quick question.
Thank you.
What, what did we include in the budget, like what amount, monetary amount, approximately? I know it's a really rough estimate, but.
Within the bond, it was three hundred thousand dollars for this process. That is probably five to eight times more than what our peer cities have needed, so I don't expect it to be anything like that. I hope and anticipate that it will be fifty thousand dollars or less for this first phase. But it will open the door to, if we find the right person, I or the right vendor, I hope that this will be the continuation through the next phases of the detailed development of those sites. I, I would also say, part of the reason I did ask for some concept plans, just like we've had concept plans come before council that don't look anything like what was developed, it becomes a helpful starting point that demonstrates that they're thinking about the particular peculiarities of our needs and the topography or the restraints or constraints of what we have. And, and so allowing them to come forward with something also gives them feedback from council and from staff, that won't work, or that's not what we were thinking of, or that's perfect, let's continue to move in that direction. And there's some efficiencies that come, can come from that initial proposal that allows them to pivot and, and move in a direction with clarity, rather than us going with a more ambiguous, okay, we need a, this hundred square foot space. So form and function moving concurrently, rather than separately. That, that's part of the desire in, in constructing this proposal that way.
Any questions?
I was going to suggest on the evaluation proposal criteria, keep the fee at forty, but take project understanding and work plan from thirty to fifteen, and put that extra fifteen percent on past record of experience and performance of similar projects, including references, so that we're creating another category that captures how good they've been at doing these processes in the past to counteract the heavy weight on the fee, plus acknowledging that fee is important. Jay, what are your thoughts on that?
Again, I, I threw out a proposal, and I'm flexible on it, so could you give me those numbers again? You're saying past record increased that?
So one becomes thirty-five.
Okay.
Three becomes fifteen. And the intent there was just to try to incentivize more on the quality of past performance and quality of output.
The, the only pushback that, or reframe that I would provide on that is in my one year and seven months, hard to believe, that I've been here, I have found that Corcoran takes pride in operating differently. And so finding someone that fits, or even as we do interviews, I, I say to people when they come into our atrium, if you see what's happening in our atrium and you think it's unprofessional, you're probably not going to like working here. And so past performance, I've only worked in two other cities, but they're nothing like Corcoran. And so the weighting it to how they fit with us made a lot of sense to me, maybe balancing it less. But I wouldn't want to give up that much and take it down to fifteen percent on what I call fit. I, I think fit for this body and for this body is really important. And so I, I would want.
Going to three?
So I'd say number three is understanding and work plan.
Yep.
Would, would be under the category of what I would call fit.
Yeah.
That, that you get us.
And I also think the scheduling aspect is important too, that they can live around a timely basis.
The reason the staff assigned to the project is, is important, is I've experienced the switcheroo.
Yeah.
Where the person who briefs you isn't the person that then shows up at, the next day. Any, so, so do, in, in order to increase past record, could, could that go to a?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five and twenty-five, would that be?
I've worked for, I've worked for, Mr. Council. Yep, yep. Dean?
I'm trying to understand where you're at.
So instead of weighting it twenty, ten, thirty, forty, and.
It's evaluation of proposals, paragraph H in the, in the RFP. And so the proposal is the four evaluation criteria?
No, I'm there, they're mine.
So are you good with that five percent tweak?
I like the city administrator's direction, I'm okay if he's okay.
And you're okay with that five?
So twenty-five, ten, twenty-five, and forty would be the tweak to the RFP?
Yep. You good with that with Mr. Consensus?
Yes.
Well, last item that Jay brought up earlier, the fire facility inclusion, I think it makes all the sense in the world to include that in this study. Anyone feel differently?
Well, I have, just a quick question. Yes, I'd like to understand, we, our left, last work session, we were going to have another work session to discuss fire services. And maybe involve our fire chiefs in that work session, so we could get more information directly from them too, on how they feel about moving forward with Corcoran and what that looks like. Because I feel like this is a little bit putting the horse before the cart, before we actually know what that looks like, before we've had a discussion about it.
So the only reframe that I would propose on that is, it's not a matter of if, but who? So, so we currently do have a gap, and we have to figure out how to fill the gap. I, I don't think that's in question, the question is how. And, and then to your point, we do have to continue those conversations. And, and so I, I think, again, on parallel roads, we need to do something, we're moving forward to do something, and then the details of how we do it get flushed out in those continued conversations, both in work session and in conversations between our public safety director and those partners.
So would it be a situation where they're looking at all of our properties and saying, okay, this is an option to have a fire service attached to this municipal government center? But maybe we have a discussion with our fire chiefs, and one stands out, and we have just our municipal center in one location, and maybe it's police and fire, or I don't know, just some different, because of where the fire station's needed. Maybe it's not in a specific spot that is what we think is the best spot. because of where the fire station's needed. Maybe it's not in a specific spot that is what we think is the best spot for it to be located? Is that what you're saying? So they would give us an overall picture of what that might look like?
Potentially. I think the proposal at this point for economy of scale would be a civic campus that includes all of those. But I also, the reason it's not included in that is because that might not be the smartest proposal. We have the professionals flush that out.
That would, if I may, that would be the nice to have, one campus, everything there. Just talking kind of the Corcoran way, the cheaper, those kind of things. I've always dreamt this place to be the police and fire with an addition on the side, keep Public Works out. We're Public Works by property out there to grow that more and such as needed, and then a city hall someplace. That's, that's, that's the nice to have and the least expensive in my mind. And in the proposal to have somebody look at this that way, what is the best way to do it? I'm all on board. I just, I'd rather everything be, if we do anything and anything comes out of this, I don't know how we can do it without increasing property taxes, which has been something that we've done really well at the last number of years.
Probably if you want to build it. How we could build it.
How are we going to build it without increasing?
So to speak to that, since before I came here in 2027, there's been a placeholder in the long-term financial plan as you go back and look for a fifty million dollar bond in order to build the civic campus. That's been discussed about for many years. And when we talk about trying to do things wisely as good stewards of not just the public trust, but also the public funds, one of the things that isn't lost on us is, one of our partners is proactively looking to build a new space. This seems like for us to determine.
This one.
This, well, we haven't had those conversations yet.
We could coexist with someone else picking up part of that tab of a campus.
If they want to partner, but we have three partners. And so we owe it to all three of our partners to have conversations with them about how they, how they're thinking about their role in the future of fire service. But we also have responsibility to our residents to identify and deal with the reality of this service gap. So our public safety director and I drove through the city and we looked at response times. And we have an idea of where the space is, to your point. It needs to be within this window in order to have a five mile, or what was it, the timeframe?
Two and a half mile, five miles, and yeah, the response time, then mine is three.
Yes. So we drove around in the vehicle to go, okay. And the two properties that we have could meet that need right now in terms of response times. We didn't want to get any deeper than that, because to your point, our partners, we have to have conversations with them. This gives us enough information to know the clarity is.
Cool.
Do we have a space or do we not have a space so we can let this vendor know?
And I think my point would be, if we remove the fire aspect from it, that eliminates a lot of options and possibilities down the road. If we include it, it leaves all sorts of options open down the road. So that would be my argument.
I believe it should be included. It just, it would be nice if we could just, one of those three could step up and just do whatever instead of all the other conversations that are going on. I haven't had it for a couple of months.
It'd be a helpful catalyst of clarity for them too, I think.
Yep, I love it.
In terms of Corcoran priorities.
I think we're all on board then with that. Do you need a motion or are you good with consensus?
Actually, I, I do need a motion, because this is going to go to a contract.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Either one of us, you choose.
Mark or Dean?
Mark.
All right.
Sure.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All righty. That takes care of that one. And then I think we're going to take a five-minute break here. So we'll recess the meeting and come back at eight thirty-nine.
This is the second meeting in a row.
Your first conference meeting after a minute.
Call the meeting back to order. And we will continue on with a quick nine B, which is City Park renaming. JCV, did you have something?
No, I'm just happy to answer any questions who have, because they didn't really want to take this table, so I figured it out.
I would just say, we kind of, a couple of weeks ago, we discussed, or a week and a half ago, discussed it. We feel like we had some consensus on Heritage Park as the name. Commission had, I don't really know, but.
The commission was not in favor of the name. The recommendation from the commission was to bring it back on July seventeenth, have some time within that interim period to have council, commission, and staff send in some names for recommendation, have them review it. They would provide you with the recommendation and then go from there.
So I think.
Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash six four renaming City Park to Heritage Park.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Four oh one. We have a name. Thank you. Aren't you glad I made you wait five minutes? Oh, seriously, thank you. And after that, staff reports.
So I have one thing for the council. Today, the Hennepin County District Court released an order granting the city's motion for summary judgment on housing first remaining claims for declaratory injunctive relief. Court also denied housing first motions for summary judgment.
Okay.
So that's done?
So, Housing First will have sixty days to file an appeal. Once the district court enters judgment. If Housing First were to pursue another appeal, we believe the district court's decision is worthy of being upheld on appeal. And we think it highly likely that we'll be able to persuade the court of appeals to affirm the decision.
Sounds good.
Not completely done, but as close to done as we've been in the last four years.
Makes sense.
Wow, that's great.
Thank you everybody for the hard work.
Say again?
Any other staff reports?
That is all.
Okay. Council reports. I'll just highlight that we have the upcoming conference. The Minister of Cities up in Duluth, I think the three of us are going and.
I did put the agenda, Andrew and Thaddeus, for those who are going.
So I look forward to seeing those of you that are going there. Should be a fun week or a few days. And other than that.
One question, Mr. Mayor. I asked this at the last council meeting, address twenty-one, two oh three, County Road ten, that utility pole is still not repaired. It's been three weeks now. I assume it's cable communications and stuff. It's not city stuff. Is there anything we can do? Because the power line or whatever is hanging above the driveway is about nine and a half feet now from the driveway.
I believe it is a communication pole. It's a Hennepin County permit, so I don't know what authority I would have. We did email our contact person, but communications are notorious.
Yep. Could you copy me and I can copy Kevin Anderson and see if that is well moving? Worth a shot.
Yeah, we've had power line poles and they've been repaired in less than six hours. But communications. Yeah, I know. I just, it. It said they won't even respond to our staff. So thank you, but the property owner is patient. But it's causing issues as far as deliveries and those kind of things. Amazon, even the tall vans can't get there, so they aren't delivering stuff.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it up. Anyone else? All right. With that, I will entertain, the council schedules in there. Obviously, today was a weird day because it's Monday. Should be relatively more normal for a while.
So I will highlight a couple of things if I can find my schedule. I just threw it in my pile. Please, sorry. So a couple of things that I've added. We added clarity to July tenth. Important thing on July tenth is I've added the twenty twenty-six budget goals and priorities. So that discussion will be at the next council meeting so that we can move forward in the budget process.
I won't be able to make that one.
So.
I'll tie to my input ahead of time.
That would be very helpful.
Door County.
And for the process, the plan for staff is to mirror what we did last year. And so we are bringing forward the preliminary budget discussion in a work session on August fourteenth. That's the preliminary budget. And then the preliminary budget adoption as necessary will be September twenty-fifth. Just a reminder, this is to set the max levy.
Yep.
And then we have added work sessions for October twenty-third to discuss two departments, to go through the details of their budgets, and November thirteenth, administration of public safety in order to go through the details.
And are those both on council days?
Yes, they're both on council days.
Perfect. Sounds good.
And then truth and taxation, the final budget levy for December eleventh. Only one meeting scheduled right now for the month of December.
I like that. Nice to get a reset during the holidays and come back to it in January. Perfect. All right. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.